All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's go to call the city council meeting for August 22nd to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 7 o'clock. And with that said, Clerk Swol, would you please take the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present at quorum. Councilmember Spitzley is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, councilmembers and members of the administration, do we have anybody we need to remember tonight? Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, I would ask that the council please keep in their thoughts this evening Eleanor Dorsum and her family and friends. Ms. Dorsum was the first female principal in the Lansing Public School System and served in that role from 1983 till her retirement in 1992. So she was an active member of our community and will be very much missed.
All right, we appreciate that. Are there others? All right, seeing none, if you'd please rise for a moment of meditation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we continue, could I have very quickly our police officer in the back, if you could just step back into that hallway and just ask them to quiet down just a little bit. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, you have for your approval the council proceedings of July 25th and the corrected proceedings for April 25th.
All right, Vice President Wood.
And I would move the corrected minutes. Those changes were, there were two council members that were no longer on council that were marked as a vote and it just didn't have the correct council members on there. And then I would move the July 25th minutes as written.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor for the discussion, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a legislative update from State Representative Sarah Anthony and Kara Hope.
All right, so if we could have Representatives Anthony and Hope come on down and join us in the well? Sarah, we weren't sure if you were here. We were texting furiously back and forth. All right, not a problem. So, so we appreciate both of you being here. To my council colleagues, we have tried to make it a practice of having biannual legislative updates, just to give us an opportunity to know what's going on at the state level, those things that we might be able to help out with, or folks at home or in the gallery might be able to help out with, you know, in terms of, you know, getting committee hearings and pushing things that might be in front of a committee. And then also gives us an opportunity to ask questions, you know, advocate for priorities, and even discuss things such as supplementals that might be coming up. But in any event, we do have a presentation. City TV, I do believe, has the presentation. You also, council colleagues, have the presentation within your packets. So if you want to reference those throughout, that'd be fantastic. And with that being said, I want to thank both Sarah Anthony from the 68th District, as well as Kara Hope from the 67th District, for being here. And I am going to turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, and thank you for the invitation to address you this evening. I'm Kara Hope, as Councilman Hussein, Council President Hussein said. And I'm here with State Rep. Sarah Anthony. I think she is going to begin with some highlights from the budget.
Thank you, Rep. Hope, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to have a few moments, just to talk a little bit about what we're doing at the Capitol. And then if you have any questions, I think if you have time, we're more than willing to answer some questions. But I want to be very brief in our remarks. I saw the agenda, and I know there's some folks who want to speak during public comment, so we won't be before you long. I'd rather do more listening than chatting.
Can I stop you real quick?
Sure.
Jason, do we have, do we have the presentation so that we can actually put it up on the, on the monitors? Okay, perfect, thank you so much. All right.
So, one of the things that you send us to the Capitol to do, and just as a reminder, both Representative Hope and I share Lansing in terms of constituency. Because of redistricting, this will be my last term as State Representative in Lansing, and Representative Hope will now have close to 50% of the city of Lansing. So, the majority of that is south of the river. So, for folks who are interested in just engaging with us, the lines are changing a little bit. But, one of the things that you send us to the Capitol to do is to fight for every dollar that we can get for the city of Lansing. And so I'm pleased to report that between our legislative advocacy, as well as our state Senator Curtis Hertel, we were able to garner quite a few additional dollars for the city of Lansing. And it is on the screen, so I won't read to you all, but we were able to secure around $5 million for redevelopment for the city of Lansing, particularly for downtown redevelopment. $5 million to address our growing mental health crisis through the McLaren Hospital Behavioral Health Center. We consulted with many of you. We wanted to make sure that while this would be a statewide effort, that our children, our people here in mid-Michigan would get its fair share of those resources. Many of you were brought into meetings with myself and Senator Hertel to make sure that we were negotiating that deal. And we're really proud that we were able to secure that, so that we would not have blight in South Lansing. I'm a product of South Lansing, and that's something we just don't need. So, a way for us to redevelop that site, as the new McLaren Hospital has transitioned more to the eastern side, but to continue to provide services there for the south side. We also were able to secure $5 million to address our local school district's lack of bus drivers. We see some of the headlines that are happening out of Lansing schools, but we wanted to make sure to try to address that through additional dollars. As well as $2 million for Potter Park Zoo. That's to build a new animal health facility on the zoo grounds. We had several of you reach out about that specific project, and again, we were able to secure those additional dollars.
Thank you. I'm going to highlight some of the general fund budget items that are specifically benefiting local municipalities, including Lansing. And I won't read it all, like Rep. Anthony, she set a good example for me. I won't read the slide to you. But first of all, there's a 5% increase in a one-time, 1% increase in constitutional revenue sharing for cities, villages, and townships. So that, that's definitely an improvement from years past. Another item I would highlight is $750 million for grants to help local governments get their retirement systems funded. There's $251 million in economic development and workforce grants. And then, a project that is dear to Rep. Anthony, $5 million for Michigan Reconnect, which is a very successful and growing program that offers two years of free college or career training for students who are 21 years or older.
So in addition to money that has been dedicated broadly to the city of Lansing, as well as statewide, I know that many of you all are products of Lansing schools, or just believe that education is, you know, paramount to anything we're doing. Economic development, retaining talent, retaining people, and investing in our region. And so, we're proud to just report that we have seen historic investments in education. Partnering with our governor, who is a City of Lansing resident, we were able to secure record numbers of funding for schools across the state, but particularly here in Lansing. Again, I won't go through every bullet, but this is around special education funding. This is funding for at-risk youth, before and after-school programming, Great Start readiness programs, teacher retention and recruitment. These are things that we heard from constituents across the, the region and across the state, that if we don't get education right, when we talk about having record numbers of funding coming from the state level, from the federal level, making sure that we're also investing, not just in economic development and all the things that we need to be focused on, knowing that education is just really important. So, we were able to secure and get our base funding amount to $9,150 per pupil. Again, this is a historic number for our kids across the region.
So, on the community side of things, and of course, schools are an important part of the community, but looking a little more specifically at environmental issues, the budget contains funding for lead service line replacement, which we know isn't an issue in Lansing, but is an issue throughout the state, and it's a significant health detriment. There's also funds for contaminated site cleanups, and it also addresses our, our growing mental health needs, which I think that'll be a little bit of a theme tonight, including expanding behavioral health capacity. For families, this budget includes reducing barriers to employment for Michiganders, includes affordable transportation options and childcare options, and not as a result of this particular budget, but overall, Governor Whitmer has been able to make affordable childcare available to 150,000 children in Michigan.
So shifting a little bit to some of our outside of the budget priorities, legislative priorities. So, what do you all think is the number one issue that my office, probably your office, hears about on a nearly daily basis, outside of unemployment assistance, food assistance? What's the number one thing that you think people in Lansing and Lansing Township contact our office about?
Housing.
Housing. We're in a housing crisis. The stories that we hear are heartbreaking. The stories that we hear that people cannot get the sweet spot of both quality housing and affordable housing, it's, it's a tragedy. The fact that people call all the time, and a lot of times, really 90% of the times, I have to say, it's a city issue. That whether it is a pink tag, a red tag, whether it is infestations, security issues, you know, how they can find folks, you know, quality rentals in the city, it's heartbreaking for me to have to say, as a state legislator, these are the things that I'm able to do. I'm able to pass statewide policies that can address certain things, but ultimately, many of it is city issues. But, in the time that I've had in the legislature, and how we're trying to address the issue is kind of at the edges, but I look forward to partnering with you all, if you have legislative ideas that you would like myself, I don't want to speak for Representative Hope, but she hears it as well. There's a few things that we've been working on related to housing solutions. One is to make things very practical for tenants, right? Something as simple as allowing tenants to use their security deposit to be applied towards their rent in the event of an emergency. Or allowing for folks to return, allow for the return of a tenant's security deposit by electronic transfer. I, I don't have to talk about, you know, restrictive covenants. You all have already heard me talk about housing discrimination, and how it is real and pervasive, even in a very diverse community like Lansing. So, again, many of these housing issues we hear about, while most of them are local, I just wanted to offer my support in saying that if there are tangible legislative things that we can be working on, we're here to partner, because it is so important, and it's just the number one thing we hear in our offices.
And if I could stop you real quick, because I think there was stats there. And I would agree, we hear about housing quite a bit, locally, obviously. And, and I would agree that it's a local issue, but I would also push back just a little bit, because I think there's a lot we could be doing at the state. As an example, you know, one of the things we know in our region is that we need 20,000 affordable and quality units over the next 20 years. But, all of our municipal partners, sorry, in the region point and say it has to be in the urban core. And the problem with that, and I get historically why we've done things that way, but we've had evolution when it comes to public transportation. We've had evolution when it comes to access to services and the like. And so when you talk about the hierarchy of needs, there are so many things that when you concentrate poverty the way that we have been for so long, in the city of Lansing, you absolutely start to chip away at all, all of those needs. And so we never advance people out of their poverty, we essentially make them comfortable. And one of the things I would love to see, and I think of Senate Bill 9 out of California, where essentially what they said was, "Look, you are not going to engage in exclusionary zoning, and anything up to a fourplex will be legal statewide." So that's just one example of some other things that states are doing, because we have municipal partners that are saying, "No duplexes, no triplexes, no row homes, no ADUs, no..." And so they're literally zoning out these people that might want to send their students to the Hazlitt School District, or might want to. And then you have, you know, and frankly, when you concentrate poverty the way you have, as an example, in my neighborhood, you, you run into an issue of truly being able to service those properties, those people, ensuring that they have access to good, safe parks, and good schools, good reputable businesses. And so everything's exacerbated by that concentration. And then we're struggling, frankly, to get out with, as an example, the code department that we have, the building safety department that we have, to get out there and ensure that, you know, these are safe and affordable, I'm sorry, safe and quality homes, that we're able to get off after some of these, some of these bad actors. And frankly, there's a lot of them in the city of Lansing. And so I would, I would just push back a little bit. I think there's a lot of things other states are doing. Legalizing statewide ADUs, legalizing, again, up to fourplexes statewide. And there's just a number of other things. So we'll continue to research on our end, and we'll continue to push some of those ideas to you all, because we certainly want to partner on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, so every month, just so you know, we get access to 10 bill requests. And I say this every time I come, but if you have a bill idea, bring them to me. This is the first time I've heard about any of those ideas, so please, bring them to me. I will introduce them. We will fight for them. We will fight for them to get a hearing. We will fight to get it to the governor's desk. But you all are the local experts, so bring me your ideas, and we'll fight for them. The other thing that we're trying to address, and this comes directly from you all as city council members, is addressing traffic issues, particularly related to speed in our corridors. So, you know, Councilman Hussein, you, I'm sorry, President Hussein, you have sent me article after article. I see it in the LSJ, I see it all across the state, how speed is killing people in our community. There is a, a signature line that, you know, is used in every single article that says, "Speed contributed to the death of a pedestrian, the death of a motorcyclist." It is heartbreaking to have to continue to see time and time again how reckless driving in our community is killing people. And so, several bills I've introduced, and I talked about these at our last meeting, so I won't go back into them, but tries to address it, whether it is through advanced technology, or finally giving you all, as local government officials, the ability to lower speed limits in our community. Right now, because of a very convoluted process with the Department of Transportation, you're not allowed to do that. So for example, if you see someone going 90 miles an hour down MLK, and many of us live off of MLK, if we get enough of those people, the process is that the only option that you all have is to ask for a speed study through MDOT, and the only solution is to increase the speed. Now what sense does that make? Because you all know MLK. There's businesses, there's schools, there's homes, and it's just a matter of time before more and more of our loved ones die because of the reckless driving. So, we've been working closely with several of you to fight for a hearing for these bills, and hopefully get them to the governor's desk. So, obviously, we talked a little bit about this, so I won't go into too much detail, but the Michigan Reconnect Program. So, Representative Hope mentioned it, that it is a tuition-free pathway to a certification or an associate's degree. I'm partial. I think everyone should go to Lansing Community College, but it is a partnership with all of our community colleges across the state. And we all know someone who, you know, who is 25 and older, who maybe didn't go straight off to college, or maybe college in terms of the four-year institution just isn't a good fit. And oftentimes, I like to say, "You just need an additional piece of paper after high school." It could be partnering with one of our labor unions, a skilled trade, a certification, associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, but you need something. And so, this provides an opportunity for folks who normally would not be able to afford an associate's degree or certification, through their community college to do just that. We're working on expanding Reconnect, because I think 25 is great, but 21 would be better, right? In my opinion, college should be completely free. It should be an extension of your K-12 education, but baby steps. So, Reconnect is, is present, it's around. We've had over 100,000 applicants for the program, so word is getting out. But if you could partner with us and let your constituents know that Reconnect is an option for folks, in addition to our amazing skilled trade opportunities across the state. I won't get into too much detail, but we also have done 5107, which would create a model teacher cadet program, again, for teacher retention, preparation throughout our, our region. We just hear loud and clear that Lansing wants to prioritize education. And so, we've been trying to be responsive to those needs as well.
Thank you. Shifting gears a little bit here, one of the legislative priorities for me has been improving safety and reducing gun violence. So, to that end, Rep. Anthony and I actually partnered on this, a package of bills that would regulate retail gun sellers in the state of Michigan. Now, you probably know that most, most firearms are sold by federal firearms licensees, but unfortunately, they're subject to very little oversight. And I, I won't give you a lot of, a lot of stats and, and things like that, but I, I will mention a couple of things that really jumped out for me when we, in the course of doing research on this issue over three years. So, the Department of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, that's the ATF, they are allowed to conduct just one unannounced inspection of a federally licensed firearms dealer per year. One per year. But because of understaffing and underfunding, this, once a year, never, that's never the case. And what really happens is that dealers are inspected about once a decade. So, the system we have now is kind of the baseline. We can do better in Michigan. In fact, we can do, we can do a lot better in Michigan. In working with the Giffords Law Center to prevent gun violence, we, we've learned that they have best practices for states to improve gun dealer oversight and keep stolen guns out of our communities, which unfortunately is a, a problem in Lansing and everywhere, really. Those stolen firearms don't, probably go on to, to do other illegal things. I mean, not the gun itself, but whomever took it. So, it's important to keep those out of the, out of the communities. So, of the, of the best practices, Michigan only, only does one. And the package of legislation that I'm talking about here would require dealers to report lost or stolen guns within 48 hours. There's currently not a requirement that they report to local authorities. There's a bill that would require a lot more security and surveillance of gun sellers, and that one was sponsored by Rep. Anthony. This package would also require gun sellers to perform background checks on their employees, currently not required. And it would make gun dealers liable for damages if they sell a firearm to someone who is prohibited by law from possessing one. Unfortunately, this is an issue I hear a lot, a lot about too, and I, I think Rep. Anthony does too, gun violence. Of course, when there's a mass shooting, a school shooting, that, that makes everyone take notice, but the everyday gun violence is really more pervasive. And by everyday, I mean, you know, street crime, domestic violence, suicides. So, even though we hear about this a lot, and I personally received letters from children, which are really difficult to read, telling me that they do not feel safe in school because of guns. The majority has shown no obvious interest in taking on this issue. Oh, that's right. Advanced Peace was a, a component of, of this, not of this bill package, but previously, and I'm sure you all know about that. That was something that we were successful in advocating some funds for. And so, that's a win, but unfortunately, without cooperation from the majority, we're, we're kind of stalled out here. And then, transitioning to elections, it's been a priority for me to protect the right of vote, the right to vote, and I know it is for Rep. Anthony too, and to prevent needless obstacles for voters. I think we've all read the, read the stories of legislatures across the country doing terrible things to restrict access to the vote, making it harder for everyone, but particularly seniors, those with disabilities, and black and brown folks. So, they, they tried here, of course they did. They tried in Michigan, but we had this, they had no success, because we have our, our governor who vetoed those measures. But, to counter these efforts, two things. One is making sure that everybody just has accurate information, which is, I think, you know, a big part of the, the fight. And to that end, I've done a number of outreach events with the Secretary of State, local clerks, voting rights advocates, and others, to just get the correct information out there, to let people ask their questions, and get them answered by an expert. And I, I have a newsletter from my office that's in the back. Hopefully you all will get one too. Spelling out some of the, the new things this year, so like redistricting, but then also just basic information about where to register to vote, how to, how to find your polling location, and things like that. And then a little bit about some of the legislation I'm going to talk about right now. So, we've done two major legislative packages on elections. One is the Protecting Your Right to Vote package. There's a lot of good stuff in there that we've made priorities in collaboration with the clerk community, who've been very, very consistent, I would say, across the, across the state, across party lines, in, in what they think would make their, their lives easier as clerks, and, and not just make their lives easier, make it better for voters, more accessible, a better process, and a safer process. So, one component of this package would prohibit firearms from inside polling locations, or within 100 feet of a polling location. There's a process for early in-person voting. Again, this is proposed legislation, it has not passed. And then there's a requirement in there that would require the state to pay for special election costs for state legislative elections. My bill in the package would prohibit petition signature gatherers and their, their workers from intentionally misleading folks to get signatures on their petitions. I don't know if you've heard anecdotally, or, or maybe experienced firsthand, this is a very pervasive issue. They're not required to tell you the truth about what's, what the, what the petition would do. And that's very concerning, because not only, not only are they signing a petition that could get something on the ballot before everybody, where it would have, you know, a fair chance, yes or no. They have the chance with a signature to get it before the legislature, who can put it up for a vote and get it passed without the opportunity for the governor to veto it. So I feel like it kind of takes the best of that kind of direct democracy and, and misuses it. The other package that I, I'd like to mention real briefly is your freedom to vote. And my bill in the package would require one secure absentee ballot drop box per 20,000 people. You'll hear different numbers from time to time, 10,000, 15,000. But just to make that free avenue for returning their absentee ballot available more widely. In addition to these packages, I also introduced a bill that would make it a misdemeanor. And I should say, I'm an attorney, I don't like criminalizing behavior, but that said, I did introduce a bill that would make it a misdemeanor to intimidate or harass an election official, including poll workers, or prevent an election official from performing their duties. Unfortunately, this is pervasive as well. All over the country, and right here in Michigan, clerks of either party or no party, as, as some municipalities have, they've received threats of violence. About 1 in 3 feels unsafe because of their work. And... of violence. About 1 in 3 feels unsafe because of their work, and as Clerk Swob would probably agree, elections can't take place without poll workers, and it's a low-paying, temporary job. They typically do it out of a sense of community spirit or civic duty, and we really need to make sure that they feel safe in their work on Election Day, and in so doing, making the environment safer for voters as well.
So, this is just a quick commercial break to say, we have tons and tons of bills that we introduce, many of whom that have gotten to the governor's desk, that have become law, and there's a website that you can look up all of our bills at legislature.mi.gov, and that's literally where you can see what we have sponsored, what we've co-sponsored, and also how we are voting on different issues. You know, shameless plug, I encourage everyone who is here, everyone who is at home, to look up our voting record, see where we are on many of the issues that you care about. So, you know, my next slide talks about, you know, directly came from constituents here in Lansing to address fireworks, right? It is no secret that Representative Hope and I have been the loudest voices about this, probably louder than the fireworks, right? Related to this issue, we're fighting for a hearing, we will continue, I don't want to speak for you, but we will continue to introduce this bill, we will continue to ask you to lobby and advocate for it to reach the governor's desk. And then also, a bill package that Rep. Hope and I have been introducing now for term after term is around child marriage. Today, I had an interview with a woman who was a child bride, and, you know, heard a heart-wrenching story about how this has impacted her life. It is impacting the lives of mostly young girls across our community, across the state, even now. And the fact that you can be as young as 13, 14 years old and marry someone as old as 30, 40, 50, right now, today, that is happening. And so, we will continue to fight and to have a bill that we can all be proud of, to be protecting our kids. But again, criminal justice reform, environmental quality, public safety, if you go to the legislature.mi.gov website, you'll be able to see the bills that we continue to fight for, and many of whom that have reached the governor's desk.
Very briefly, I wanted to highlight an outreach event that Rep. Anthony and I collaborated on back in March at the Cooley Law School. We held an expungement fair, which was a very, it was a very busy and very exciting evening. We were able to start expungement paperwork for 85 individuals, 85 moms and dads, and grandpas and grandmas, and sisters and brothers. So, this wouldn't have been possible without the help of Attorney General Dana Nessel, who's led the way on this issue, and the city clerk's office was there to register voters. The law for expungements has considerably improved, and more individuals and more offenses are eligible for expungement, and if I say it on TV, it's got to be true, right? We're going to make this an annual event, and we'd appreciate any help in promoting this event, and I'll turn it over to Rep. Anthony.
And I'm going to speed through these next couple of slides.
And I was just going to ask, just because I want to make sure we provide an opportunity for questions, and again, I think there were a few asks on your end, so certainly, I'd like to hear from my council colleagues, but thank you.
Okay, so watch this. There is a ballot that will reach mailboxes that folks can vote this November. Please take a look at the Secretary of State's website to see not only different candidates, but we will have several ballot proposals that folks need to be educated on. Two that we wanted to highlight was Promote the Vote, as well as Reproductive Freedom for All, which talks about, they're very self-explanatory, but oftentimes, the language can be a little tricky. So, we encourage folks to take a look at that language, do your research before you cast your vote.
All right. I believe that's about it, other than the city's bond proposal. I hope everybody knows about that one. And then, just to sum up, before we open the floor to questions, if that's the plan, I wanted to share that I'll be holding a constituent coffee hour on Monday, September 19th, from 12:30 to 1:30 at the Capital Area District Library in South Lansing. And may I announce, Rep. Anthony is also having a coffee hour at the end of the month, Monday, September 26th, from 8:00 AM to 9:30 PM, location to be announced, and you can find the most up-to-date information on Rep. Anthony's Facebook or my Facebook, and that's our speedy conclusion.
Then the last thing I'll say is, our contact information is the last slide, and also, I'll be just giving you all a packet of information. It includes my hearing request letter for those transportation bills that you all asked me to propose, as well as information related to reconnect that you can share with your constituents, as well as some information related to those ballot proposals. The letter that we drafted for the hearing request to the Transportation Committee, it also has the contact information for the chair and the vice chair. So, this is where I ask for your help. If you all, in your role as city council members, can reach out to these chairs and say, "We know that my state representative, that our state representatives have introduced these bills, and as elected official to elected official, we're asking you to act. We're asking you to give these bills a hearing." You all are a powerful voice, and again, we're the capital city, you can see the capital, and so if you all can help us advocate for these bills, it would go a long way. So, I'll leave this packet for you all, and let me know if you have any questions about anything in there.
All right, we certainly appreciate that. Do we have questions or comments from the body? Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. It's more of a, just want to say thank you to my state Rep. Kara Hope and future Senator Sarah Anthony, sorry about that. Thanks for giving us your legislative update. Keep fighting the good fight, and let me know how I can help you move forward.
Okay, oh, Councilman Daniel, sorry.
One, thank you guys so much for coming. Thank you, President Hussein. My question, really quick, is on the gun safety bills, 6272 and 6273, do you, do you guys have bipartisan support for it? Do you feel like you're going to be able to get it moved?
Yeah, so the Responsible Gun Sellers Save Lives package, the one on retail gun sellers, unfortunately, my little editorial note at the end is that the majority does not care about these issues, at least that's what their behavior demonstrates, in my opinion. So, no, we do not have bipartisan support for reasons I can't explain, but that doesn't mean that we don't remain hopeful and, you know, if necessary, like the child marriage bills, because it's so important, we'll reintroduce this if we have to in January.
Great, thank you. All right, just one additional thing that came to mind, circling back to the housing issue. Another thing that we need to discuss, we actually have MISTHA officials coming in, I believe, September 12th, is that correct, to talk about payment in lieu of taxes, tax credits on their end, percentages of pilots, and points that they either do or do not give if we give pilots beneath 10%, award pilots beneath 10%. But one of the things that I hear a lot about when I talk, when I sit down and talk to people that want to essentially put money in the ground here in the city of Lansing, and they want to do multi-family, big, massive, multi-family, low-income housing projects, I always push back, and I always tell them, you know, is there a reason we can't do single-family, and again, duplexes, triplexes, row homes, things of that nature, because we know, I mean, the data sets are clear, right? We know that huge, multi-family properties, particularly when you go vertical, simply do not, they do not work. They do not help to send people, and there, a lot of times, they're very difficult to maintain. We know that. And one of the things that I hear almost every single time is, we have issues with financing those types of projects, and the issue is with MISTHA. And so, I would really push you all to take a look at why, you know, whether it's tax credits, other forms of financing, why MISTHA is so averse to funding projects that are not these massive, high-density, vertical-type projects, because again, they simply don't work, okay? Thanks so much. Vice President Wood.
Just to add to that, representatives, I think the other component could be that a requirement be that a percentage, at least a third, if not more, be market-rate housing for a couple of reasons. One, when we're doing the pilots, that means that's less revenue that's coming in to the city. When it's market rate, then you can collect full taxes on that. Two, if you're integrating the two together, you don't know whether your next-door neighbor is paying full market rate or whether they're getting some type of subsidy. But you do know, if you're driving down the street and you're going past Washington Park and, you know, some of these other complexes we have, where we know there's nothing but poverty in those. And I think there has to be a mechanism that we're putting into place, that if we can't get single-family or duplexes built here in the community, that we have to look at how we can do something to integrate the population.
Thank you for that. I will also say, there is a statewide, I think, work group or task force that was just announced by the administration related to housing, so I'm trying to be as involved in that as possible. Again, when it's something that we hear loud and clear from our constituents, that's where I need to be, right? So, I'll be sure to report back if I'm invited, maybe by the end of the year, just in terms of what we hear from those conversations and what resources we can bring back to Lansing.
Fantastic. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Hussein. Thank you guys so much for being here today. It's a pleasure to see you, and thank you for the update. I just wanted to truly concur with Councilman Hussein, as well as Councilman Wood, on that issue. It's an issue that has continued to come and to play with the constituents on a daily basis, those issues, and then, of course, looking at the financing and the requirements, is how do we make an integration that we can inspire people, be inclusive, and create true community, versus saying, "Oh, well, that's over there," those things. So, thank you so much.
All right, seeing no other questions or comments, thank you so much for being here. I certainly appreciate it. We know you put a ton of work into that presentation, so thank you. All right.
Okay, our next special ceremony is regarding 109 East Randolph Street. We have a rezoning and a special land use.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So, this is the 109 East Randolph Street, Z1, 2022, rezoning and special land use, 12022, special land use. So, the applicant, Bruce Hicks, is requesting a rezoning of the property at 109 East Randolph Street from a R-6A residential, or urban detached residential, to a R-AR residential adaptive reuse, and a special land use permit to allow for the use of the existing building at this location for a state-licensed adult foster care, large group home for the age, providing around-the-clock care for up to 20 senior residents, operated in accordance with all state Michigan requirements for such facilities. The available information supports a finding. The request satisfies all the criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance for evaluating rezoning and special land use permit applications as detailed in the staff report, and the Board of Zoning Appeals recommends the approval of these. Now, is Bruce Hicks here for the, to speak in behalf of this? Anybody here that would like to come down and speak for this presentation? Nobody from LEDC, huh?
Okay, so it looks like the applicant is not, in fact, here to do the special presentation. Okay, all right. Well, we certainly appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
All right, we will start with Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just have an announcement. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, the Lansing for Caesar E. Chavez Committee will be hosting a fiesta this September 9th, which is Friday, and September 10th, Saturday. Friday will start at 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and Saturday, 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM, in Old Town, at the Caesar E. Chavez Plaza. There will be food, live music, dancing, vendors, and a beer tent. All proceeds will go to help erect an archway for the Caesar E. Chavez Plaza in Old Town.
All right, do we have others? Councilman Brown? Councilman Daniels?
All right, I have a few things. First, the East Side Summer Fest is this Saturday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. There'll be live music, food truck, vendors, and then August 31st at the Allen Neighborhood Center, from 2:30 to 7:00, there'll be a farewell tour for Joan Nelson, who is now retiring. And then, the last thing is, I'd actually request to pull item 10 from the Resolutions of Action. It is the Measures for Transparency During City Council Meetings, and I just want to say on this, this resolution is something that I, you know, I know we'll continue to talk about. I just want to remind you that even John Adams said, "Liberty cannot be preserved without a general knowledge among the people who have a right and desire to know," a right and desire to know. People want to be involved in the process, and they want to be able to be seen, be heard, and see what we're doing, and I think it's really important that we continue to talk about this, and as one of our budget priorities. And so, I'm going to request that it gets moved to committee for September 26th, for the Committee of the Whole.
Okay, so you're asking to, you're asking to pull it so that we can bundle it with the budget priorities and the process on the 26th?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. Is there anybody that just wants to generally speak to that, or? Okay, well, we certainly appreciate that, and we'll pull it. Thank you. I'm sorry. Yep, that's it. Clerk Swob, go ahead, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, President Hussein. I know that in my absence at the last meeting, my deputy, Brian, thanked all those who participated in the previous, in the August primary election, but I do want to just echo that and reiterate that. It takes a whole team, a whole city, to hold an election, including the election workers, my staff, as well as the voters are a key part of that as well. So, thanks to all for participating, and being the, that there is not much of a time gap between Michigan's primary and general election. We are heading full forward into the November general election. We will be emailing out an opportunity for those who wish to apply for an absentee ballot in the next week or so, following with paper applications. For those of you who applied for August and November, you're all set, but we won't have the physical ballots until the end of September, but in the meantime, we will continue to gather applications for absentee ballots for those who wish to vote by absentee, and we'll be working on our recruiting and training of election workers to work in the precincts on the November 8th election, where we have so many important positions, as well as proposals on the ballot. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the details.
Please join the City of Lansing's Park and Recreation Department and the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries for the Sixth Annual Service of Remembrance on Sunday, August 28th, at 3:00 PM in the Fratcher Memorial Garden inside Mount Hope Cemetery, which is at 1800 East Mount Hope Avenue. This will be a special ceremony honoring the memory of the loved ones interred in our city cemeteries in 2021. It's hosted by the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, and the program includes readings, a message, special music, and a recitation of names and candle lighting. Keepsake candles will be available, and there'll be light refreshments afterwards. There's no RSVP needed, and it is handicap accessible. So, again, that's on Sunday, the 28th, at 3:00 at Mount Hope Cemetery. You can find the information also on our Facebook page at Lansing Cemeteries, or on our website at F O L H C dot wildapricot.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements? Any other community event announcements?
I'm Julia Miller from Punks with Lunch Lansing, and I'm a person in recovery. I'm here to send an invite reminder for August 31st, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, at the Fledge, which is located at 1300 Eureka Street. Punks with Lunch is hosting an event for the International Overdose Awareness Day. There will be a portion for an open mic where survivors and people affected by overdose can get up and share a bit of their story, read a poem, et cetera. There'll be Narcan distribution, a discussion on stigma and how it can be harmful to people in recovery or those who may otherwise be interested in recovery. We are creating a memorial display to add photos of loved ones that we have lost to overdose. If you would like to bring one to add, please do so. We'll also be including more special parts to the event to bring awareness to this healthcare concern and ways to offer support of those who have lost loved ones as well as those who are still struggling. The event is on our Facebook page if you would like to get more information or a reminder for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other community event?
Hi, Jerry Norris with the Fledge. We have an entrepreneurial event tomorrow night, 99 Problems But a Pitch Ain't One. It's every Tuesday at 7:00. I want to keep reminding that and getting people to practice pitching. That's 7:00 to 7:30. It's at 1300 Eureka, and it is also online. It is a hybrid accessible meeting. On the 24th, we will have an ARPA grant writing workshop. So a lot of people have ideas that they want to submit proposals. So we're going to sit down and help them. That will be from 6:00 to 8:00, again at 1300 Eureka, and again, online and hybrid. The next thing is the mini bazaar we have every Friday from 12:00 to 4:00. It is kids coming and selling their art, their jewelry, their lemonade stand, things like that. It's, again, an entrepreneurial event, trying to spread some of that love through the neighborhood. And then, on the, next Monday, I think it's the 29th, the People's Council will meet again at 7:30, and that will be hybrid as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And it looks like we have no other community event announcements, so we will move on to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters does include items 5 through 17 on the agenda. And although item 10 has been pulled, we will still allow public comment on that. So items 5 through 17. And I failed to introduce our intern with us tonight, Eva Gavin. So if you need to sign up for public comment, turn that into Eva in the next minute or so. And while folks are still finishing that up, we will go to the mayor's comments or the chief of staff.
All right, Mrs. De Sessi, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, Council President Hussein and members of the city council. I'll start the presentation, but then I'll turn it over to our, to the deputy chief of staff, and he'll, he'll complete the report. One of the things that Mayor Short asked us to do is to, again, remind our residents that anyone who's interested in applying for an ARPA grant, and you all know we have a total of 1.9 million that's available for grants, they can simply go to our website. I guess a good description would be, when you're on our website, which is lancinmichigan.gov, you can go to the site that says "I want to", and then type in the word "ARPA grant", and it'll take you directly to the site so that you can see the application and you can see information as it relates to this application itself. This application is due by Friday, September 30th, 2022. The forms that are on there are all fillable, so it's easy to apply. And then also, your application should be sent to our finance director, Desiree Kirkland, and her email address is listed on there, but just in case. It's Desiree dot Kirkland at lancinmi.gov. Or you can drop off your application at the City of Lansing Finance Department, which is located on the eighth floor here at City Hall. And if there are any questions, obviously, you know, please don't hesitate to call us. And residents may, or any interested person can call us at 517-483-4112. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to our deputy chief.
Yeah, if I could just add very quickly, one of the easiest ways to get to that is actually just type in Lansingmi.gov backslash grants. And what's cool about that is the ARPA grant pieces, the very first thing you see on that page, but then every other grant that the City of Lansing administers is also on that page.
Yes, yes.
And so that's, that's the easiest way.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Just two other community announcements. The Border Water and Light is hosting two community resource fairs on September 20th at Lex from 1:00 to 5:00 PM, and on September 21st at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. On September 1st, the Parks and Recreation Department is holding a Back to School Bash at Davis Park, Ben Davis Park, at 6:00 PM. There will be a resource fair, food trucks, inflatables for kids, and the local band Global Village will be performing. So again, that's the 1st of September at 6:00 PM at Ben Davis.
Okay, thank you. So we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that is items 5 through 17 on the agenda. And items 5 and 6 are public hearings in consideration of Z1 of 2022 and SLU 1 of 2022, which are regarding 109 East Randolph Street, with which Councilmember Garza gave us an overview of previously. So I don't know if we need to...
I don't think so. But what I, what I do want to make clear, and we did have Clerk Swob reference it, earlier today, what happened was Councilman Daniels did ask for us to pull number 10, the resolution regarding transparency, because what he wanted us to do was to refer it to committee of the whole on the 26th to essentially bundle it with our budget priorities process. And so we honor that, and so that it has been referred to committee of the whole for the 26th. However, absolutely you can, because it was on the agenda prior to tonight, you absolutely can speak to that during public comment. Okay. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to touch base on the, on the scheduled public hearings that we unfortunately didn't have anybody in, in the audience to, to present to us this evening. This will be going back to DMP on August 31st, next Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay, so public comment on legislative matters. We have Elizabeth Rice, followed by Linda Appeling.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Rice, citizen of Lansing. My comments are aimed at the pilots that are on the agenda. I think that's number, hang on a second. Starting at number 15, setting a public hearing in consideration of payment in lieu of taxes for the Stadium North Senior Lots and then the Stadium North Multi-Family Lots, and then the Hillsdale Place. I really don't know that one. But certainly 15 and 16, I have some concerns. I thought that these particular developments had already received payment in lieu of taxes at the beginning of their development plan, et cetera, and other financial considerations, benefits were given to them. I, it is my understanding, at the beginning of their whole development process, these were given by the City of Lansing. I'm not understanding why we are considering payment in lieu of taxes for these particular developments. And as a corollary to that, it is something you were speaking of, Council President. Why is there not an income, affordable housing, income units within these? They, at least to my knowledge, they were promised in some of these. I'm not sure about the senior living, but I'm, I may have some confusion about different projects, but I just keep seeing payment in lieu of taxes for these developments. And I would think by now we're a little saturated with some of these high-end development units that we have in the city that have been getting tax breaks and financial benefits from the city. As a taxpayer, I have concern. I pay my taxes on time diligently. Why can't they? I wonder what goes into this, that they can even get on the agenda for consideration. Yes, I understand there will be a public hearing down the road. Fine. What is the initial consideration to even put them on the agenda? That's more a question, but I have real concerns about this being an ongoing mechanism that keeps happening with these developers. Aren't we saturated on high-end housing? And where is affordable housing? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. And we did, since we're on this topic, we did receive an email on the same set of pilots from Jody Washington that was also in opposition to these pilots. So we'll make sure that that is part of the public record for this portion of public comment. And next, we have Linda Appeling, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hello. My name is Linda Appeling, and I'm a resident of the City of Lansing. I'm here today to talk about, as near as I can tell, the poor administration of the Border Water and Light. We have had two, two, mind you, major brownouts or blackouts in the City of Lansing, where I live, Eaton County. I find this totally and completely unacceptable in terms of that. And here I see that they're probably asking for more money in relationship to that. One, you, as my representatives, should be asking the Border Water and Light why these blackouts occurred. There's no reason that you can't at least do that. I don't see anything in the charter that precludes you from doing that. Secondly, you should also have a report that indicates how any problem should be corrected. I should not have to sit here and pay money in terms of the Border Water and Light and continually get the type of service that I am getting. Last time I called there, they said, okay, it affected 1,900 people. Why can't the Border Water and Light get this straight? We're paying enough money so that they should be able to provide services without these continued blackouts.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Michael Lynn, Jr.
Well, the only thing I wanted to speak on at this time was the number 10 poll, the idea of transparency and the presentation of public comments and so forth. I agree with what Councilman Daniels said, and I think that it's an important issue. I disagree with the idea that you folks cannot act on this before putting it in the budget for the priorities of October 2022. There has to be a way. There has to be something that you can do. It's too important for you guys to not get a fire lit under your backsides and get acting on this and do something about it sooner than just simply putting it into priorities for next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Lynn, followed by Jerry Norris.
I love the joke that me and Loretta always go one and two, and I usually don't agree with anything she says, and this was a full-on agreeance. But there's no joking. This is ridiculous, and I know why it happened. And it's funny to me that I usually don't know why these things pop off, and this time I do. I know exactly why it did. Because I've talked to, like, five council people who all said they were in support of this. Shouldn't even have been an ask or an issue. Shouldn't have been a problem. This is not something that we can wait for. The reason why we brought the resolution, even through conversation with multiple council members, that we're talking about this, we're working on this in the background. Don't worry about it. We're going to get something done. We know that that's BS. This is how you kill a movement. This is how you stall it out. This is how you keep it in conversation. This, this was asked of Peter Spatter for back during the pandemic, that we wanted this. It was something that we were able to do. I've had conversations with multiple people that said it's financial issues. We need equipment. I sat in that committee room the other day, and you guys have every, you know, I'm an, I'm an audio video installer by trade. You have everything you need in that room to just flip a switch. You have a camera, speaker, TV, internet, a mobile, or phone that sits in the middle of the table that can record everybody's voices, and mics that hang from the ceiling. Just flip the switch. There's individuals who don't want this. And if it was my thing and I was sitting up in that seat, I would have brought it, no matter what, and I would have made you all show yourselves right here today that you don't want transparency, that you don't want the folks that I'm speaking for. This isn't my problem. When I keep coming up here, these aren't my problems. I live fine. I can be here. I was here at a committee meeting that had one thing on it earlier today. I'm speaking for the people. Who are you speaking for consistently? What room is it that you are going into that the citizens are standing around saying the opposite of what we all are saying? I'm not understanding it. Today, I got it, though. I know exactly why this got pulled. How dare y'all? How dare y'all? And the thing is, is everybody keeps saying, Mike, you know what? You're changing tones. It's looking good, man. You're going to get some stuff done. You're having the right conversations. You're doing it right. You're not going up here and acting out. And I say this every time, y'all always have a concern about how I do things. But I say to you, like I say to a lot of people, if you continue pinching somebody on the inside of their leg and they scream out, then you tell them they can't scream? I need you to stop. I know how this went down. And that's pitiful, because I have conversations with y'all. I did it the right way this time. Had multiple conversations. Got somebody to bring it, bring it right. Do it the right way. And here we are, September 25th, before you even have a discussion about it. Because we want to have backroom conversations. I know what you guys are worried about. You're worried about the Zoom and people actually being able to speak. I heard one person say, well, people, developers will, will line people up in here. Who cares? If people want to speak, let them speak. You don't want to do more work than your $24,000 a year is worth? Quit your other job, then. Find some hustles like I have to do. It's pitiful, man. You can't consistently keep telling people to do things the right way, then we do it, and then you do this type of stuff, and then you have petty conversations like this was all part of some elaborate plan of togetherness, that we're going to put this for conversation September 25th. Be honest. Tell me why it didn't happen. Speak up plainly.
Thank you. Next, we have Jerry Norris, followed by Erica Lynn.
What brought us all here is transparency and equity and having a fair process. That is the number one thing that brought us here. The only way to have equity is to have inclusion. The only way to have inclusion is to have accessibility. The fact that you are talking about it, kicking it down the road, talking about budgets, we get no money, no funding. Every one of our things is hybrid, have been since March 16th, 2020, since day one of COVID. The status quo never favors the oppressed. And you guys are sticking with the status quo. And we want to change that. You think, you know, Mr. Swob said today, you know, it takes a whole city to vote, to have an election. Well, we want to get the whole city registered to vote. We want them voting, and we want the whole city holding our elected officials accountable. And I think that is where the status quo is trying to win right here. Really? Accessibility right now, in this day and age, with this technology? That's the thing you're against? And you're trying to say budget and all of this?
Thank you. Next is Erica Lynn, followed by Chloretta Duckett Freeman.
Boy, I thought this was going to go a lot different when I got up here. I came here prepared to urge you all to support Agenda Item 10. I do first want to thank Councilmember Daniels for bringing the resolution. We do appreciate it being brought. I also would like to say that I think that it should have honestly been an eight council member partner resolution. I can't even believe that we're having to have a conversation about someone bringing a resolution for accessibility and transparency for democracy. Disappointing doesn't cover it, but it's the best word I can think of to say that it is disappointing to watch this happen time after time. I would have rather it been voted on today. I have found in my experience and in my observation for the last couple of years that very often, when you do not want to show your hand and come on record to tell us how you really feel about something that the people want, you kick it to the committee to die. I am here to tell you that we, as the people, will not allow that to happen. This... This is something that we should not be having to fight for. I came here to simply say, I can't fathom why none of you, all of you, wouldn't vote for this. That's what I came here prepared to say. Like, this is easy. This is simple. We're not asking for anything out of the ordinary. There are cities, governments across the country doing this exact same thing right now. It never stopped because it worked. It gave a voice to people that have barriers. When we keep talking about accessibility, we're not just talking about people that can't physically come here. We're not just talking about making accommodations. We're talking about making it equitable. You all get to constantly say, we are committed to racial equity. We are committed to health equity. We are committed to equity. And every turn that you get the opportunity to put your money where your mouth is, to actually show us a formidable effort, to do something that shows that commitment, not just lip service, we are disappointed. There are people that cannot participate in their own local government because they are working. Maybe their second job, because they're not out of work yet, because they're sleeping before their next job, because they don't have a babysitter, because they don't feel comfortable standing up here on a podium on a mic in front of all these people. These are all reasons that no one should have to stay away from participating in government when you all have the power to have simply just said yes today. I also wanted to come here to humanize someone that has to constantly drag themselves to come in here. I am a person that lives with an invisible disability, but I come here anyways. Many people don't have the privilege to do so, and this was something that was simple. It was easy. It is what the people want. You are going to be hard pressed to find anyone that is not in support of this.
Thank you. Next, we have Chloretta Duckett Freeman.
Siblings. I'm really disappointed in y'all. This is about item number ten on the agenda being removed. I'm very disappointed by our city council members. We were so ready and excited to have something to be proud of you for. We don't want to be disappointed in you. We don't want to annoy you every month. We want to cheer you on. We want to believe that you are our partners in creating a more equitable society. I don't understand why the transparency and participating resolution was moved to the Budgetary Committee on the twenty-sixth. I hope that your intentions are good and that moving it would serve the citizens of Lansing. I just want to remind you that we need full accessibility, and we need it as soon as possible. I think we had great participation during the pandemic, and I believe it's because people could fully participate from home, no matter their abilities or how many small children they have. Either way, we have our eyes on you. We are watching to see if you do the right thing. You got to get voted in again.
Thank you. That was our final speaker in this section, so to the referral of the public hearings, number five Z one of twenty twenty-two.
Development and planning.
And item six SLU one of twenty twenty-two.
Development and planning.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section eight eighty-eight point three-two for the purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for seventy-six low-income multifamily dwelling units in a project known as Walter French pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six, being Public Act three forty-six of nineteen sixty-six. The act is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilman Garza. Thank you, Council President. So Development and Planning Committee met on July thirteenth. We had a public hearing here on August eighth. This applicant is the Capital Area Housing Partnership. This was originally a six percent pilot. Now they're requesting a four percent as the project went up approximately ten thousand dollars a year, a total of six hundred thousand dollars approximately for the entire project. The requested term of pilot would be twenty years. This would create a multifamily affordable housing development that will provide seventy-six units of rent-restricted affordable housing for families at or below sixty percent of the area median income. The development consists of thirty-nine one-bedroom units, thirty-one two-bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units, each between six hundred fifty and twelve hundred fifty square feet. The development includes a furnished community room and a gym for residents. The loss of revenue to the city to grant the four percent pilot versus six percent pilot over twenty years is two hundred and two thousand forty dollars. And the project is consistent with the city's master plan and form-based code. With that, I would move for passage.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Vice President Wood.
Thank you. It's also my understanding, Councilmember Garza, if I'm correct, that there's a portion of this property that is commercial that will be paying full taxes. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Further questions, comments? Seeing none, Clerk Swope.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Councilman Garza, would you like immediate effect?
Yes.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for immediate effect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. We have item eight, grant acceptance for Financial Empowerment Fund.
Sorry, Councilman Spatafor.
Committee on Ways and Means met this afternoon to approve the acceptance of this grant. It's about fifteen thousand dollars to offset personnel and travel costs. We are, we've been granted the opportunity to mentor the city of Jackson, Tennessee as they develop their Office of Financial Empowerment. These dollars will help offset the costs associated with staff time and travel to bring folks here or visit Jackson, Tennessee to get their OFE up and running. So I would move the resolution. There's no city match.
There is a motion on the floor for the discussion. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item nine is a grant acceptance Burn Justice Assistance Grant.
Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, this is a seventy-six thousand dollar grant for the Burn Justice Assistance Grant given to the city attorney's office to help hire a, was it clerk, Lisa? Part-time clerk, part-time legal assistant, as well as some paid interns to help with some of the paperwork flow in that office. So there is, it's a one-year grant, no city match required. I move the acceptance of the grant.
There's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, item ten was pulled, so item eleven is setting a hearing for the Summit Street Development Oprah.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this is a resolution to set a public hearing regarding the granting of an Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act Certificate at seven hundred May Street. Summit Street Development LLC owner of the property located at seven hundred May Street in the city of Lansing has applied to the city of Lansing for the city to approve and the issuance of an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate. The act requires that before granting the certificate, the city of Lansing Council will hold a public hearing in order to provide an opportunity for the applicant, city assessor, and representative of the affected taxing units, the residents, and other taxpayers of the city of Lansing general public appear and to be heard regarding the approval of the Oprah certificate.
All right, you said the, I'm sorry, the public hearing would be?
The public hearing will be September twelfth.
All right, so there is a motion on the floor to set a public hearing for September twelfth. Is that correct, Councilman Garza?
Yes, sir.
All right. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
And we have item twelve, liquor license for Old Bag of Nails Pub Lansing LLC.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This is a liquor license that has been approved during Committee of a Whole. It's part of economic development. The Old Bag of Nails Pub will be in the Red Cedar Development. With that, I would move the liquor license.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. The following ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, for amending the code of ordinances by providing for the rezoning of property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty-two point zero-two of the zoning ordinance for property located at Z two twenty twenty-two. Two vacant parcels between thirty-two twenty and thirty-three thirty West Miller Road from R three suburban detached residential to R six B urban residential was introduced by the Committee of, by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title, and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
All right, Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So the applicant is Ray Garcia of VMG Construction LLC. The existing land use is vacant. Proposed land use is one duplex on each of the two vacant parcels. This is a request by Ramundo Garcia to rezone the two vacant parcels of land located between thirty-two twenty and thirty-three thirty West Miller Road from R three suburban detached residential to R six B urban residential. The purpose of the rezoning is to permit the construction of a duplex on each of the two vacant parcels. The proposed duplexes will have no negative impacts on traffic, the environment, or public services in the area. The duplexes that would be permitted under the proposed R six B zoning are consistent with the density being advanced in the master plan for the area in which the subject properties are located and the goals of the master plan located in medium and higher density. And with that, I would move to set the public hearing for September twelfth.
So on the resolution to set the public hearing for September twelfth, further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have another. The following ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, for amending the code of ordinances by providing for the rezoning of property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by section twelve forty-two point zero-two of the zoning ordinance for property located at Z three twenty twenty-two thirty twenty-one Aurelius Road from R two suburban detached residential to R six B urban residential was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title, and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. This is also, the applicant is Ray Garcia with VMG Construction. This is a request by Ramundo Garcia to rezone the thirty twenty-one Aurelius Road from R two suburban detached residential to R six B urban residential. Purpose of this rezoning is to permit the construction of a duplex on the subject property. The proposed duplex will have no negative impacts on traffic. And this is a conditional rezoning where the future use of the property will be restricted to one single-family dwelling or one duplex. And with that, I'd move to set the public hearing for September twelfth.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to set the public hearing for September twelfth. Further questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Another ordinance for introduction. The Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section eight eighty-four for the purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for eighty-six low-income elderly dwelling units in a project known as Stadium North Senior Lofts pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six. The act, the ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this applicant is MVAH Development LLC. They're requesting a seven percent pilot over the term of thirty-five years. So the requested is a Stadium North Senior Lofts in a new construction of affordable housing development for seniors that would provide sixty-six units of rent-restricted affordable housing for seniors at or below sixty percent of the area median income. The development consists of sixty-six two-bedroom units, each between eight hundred and ninety-eight and nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet. Development includes a furnished community room and a gym for residents. A ten percent pilot agreement was provided to this project in January of twenty twenty-one. The pilot application submitted by the developer to the city, as well as the ten percent pilot agreement, was incorrectly listed as seventy-seven units. So the project has received its LIHTC reservation from MISTDA. Due to dramatically increased construction and financial costs, the proposed development with the original ten percent pilot is infeasible. So the current request of the seven percent thirty-five-year pilot allows for increased construction financing along with significant amount of deferred development fee to the project that will be able to move forward. And with that, I would move to set the public hearing for September twelfth.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, another ordinance for introduction. The Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section eight eighty-eight for purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for sixty-six low-income multifamily dwelling units in a project known as Stadium North Lofts pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this is the same applicant, same, same project, or same property, different, different project. Stadium North Multifamily Lofts, construction of sixty-six units for rent-restricted affordable housing at or below the sixty percent of area median income. So this development consists of sixty-six units, fifty-one two-bedroom units, each between eight hundred and ninety-eight and nine hundred and thirty-nine square feet, and fifteen three-bedroom units, each between eleven hundred and sixteen and eleven hundred and twenty-seven square feet. Also includes a furnished community room and gym for residents. They, they requested this ten percent pilot and incorrectly listed it as a seventy-seven units as well. So not much different here. The current request is seven percent thirty-five-year pilot allows for increased construction financing. And with that, I would move to set the public hearing for September twelfth.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And our final ordinance for introduction. The Committee on Development and Planning introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Lansing by adding a new section eight eighty-eight for the purposes of providing for a service charge in lieu of taxes for forty low-income multifamily dwelling units in a project known as Hillsdale Place pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this applicant is the Griffin Group out of DeWitt. The requested term of pilot is a four percent over forty-five years. The request for a site-specific pilot ordinance is submitted by the Griffin Group. The request is forty-five four percent year, four percent pilot for the property located at ten twenty West Hillsdale Street. The Hillsdale Place project is proposed for new construction of multifamily affordable units, rental units. The completed project will contain a total of forty units located in a four-two-story buildings consisting of eight one-bedroom units averaging eight hundred and forty-five square feet, twenty-four two-bedroom units averaging at eight hundred and ninety-five square feet, and eight three-bedroom units averaging at eleven hundred and five square feet to house low and moderate-income residents. The project will be submitted for low-income housing tax credit award on October first, twenty twenty-two. So the co-lead on this agency is Avenue House Ministries and Community Mental Health Authority, Clinton, Eaton, and Inglewood Counties. Ample community gathering spaces have been designed for residents to interact with their neighbors. Additionally, office and supportive services space designated for PSH clients were included in the building design. Four apartments will meet barrier-free standards, including two one-bedroom units, one two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom units. So the staff recommended adoption of this pilot. And with that, I would move to set the public hearing for September twelfth.
All right, there is, I'm sorry, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you would still like to sign up and haven't already, please sign up in the next minute or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move that all communications and reports from city offices, boards, and commissions be considered read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we have items from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Uh, Board of Wonderlight, proposed rate changes.
Committee of the whole.
Uh, Lansing Housing Commission fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one annual reports.
Committee of the whole.
And liquor license applications, Smith Phillips for an off-premise tasting room, uh, and Sunday sales at three thousand Vine Street.
City operations.
Items from there, we have the appointment of Tamara Carter, uh, to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
Development and planning.
Uh, social districts amend to include Lansing Hotel Investors in the downtown district.
City operations.
Grant acceptance, twenty twenty-two offender success bonus for the, uh, from the Department of Corrections.
Ways and Means.
Uh, reappointment of Teresa Stokes to the South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
Development and planning.
Uh, setting a show cause sharing and orders for make-safed demolish at thirty-four twenty-two Lowcroft Avenue.
Public safety.
Uh, item from the Board of Public Service, the Bu- Board of Public Service Budget Priorities.
City operations.
Communications and petitions and notice from the Liquor Control, uh, Commission, uh, for G D L L, LLC request to transfer a escrowed license. And that's transferring governmental unit from Aurelius Township to the City of Lansing, and the new location would be five oh seven East Shaiwasi Street.
Uh, city operations.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Wood.
I would move the excused absence of Councilmember Spitzley.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to excuse Councilwoman Spitzley. Further discussion, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those appo, uh, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Remarks by council members.
Do we have any additional remarks from council members?
Um, I, I'm gonna speak very quickly, uh, with regards to number ten, uh, the transparency piece. Uh, back on August eighth, uh, Vice President Wood and myself made a promise, uh, that we would sit down with City TV, um, immediately uh, and discuss what we could in fact do with the equipment that was referenced earlier that we have, uh, with the budget that we have and with the staffing that we have. Um, we did in fact have that meeting on, uh, August sixteenth. Uh, and we, one of the biggest things we heard, uh, at least in the short term, as we do take a look at, um, budget priorities, uh, in the next couple of months and then actually, uh, start to craft, um, well, first, you know, having the administration obviously craft the budget for next year, the recommended budget, and then us taking a look at that. One of the biggest concerns we heard in the short term was transparency with regards to committees, and I have to agree. Um, you know, in terms of Open Meetings Act, uh, we, uh, we meet, you know, essentially every, or I should say, we're able to, uh, check every box. Uh, but with regards to, uh, the, you know, streaming of those and, and archiving of those and, and the like, uh, there is none of that. And frankly, um, although I, I really respect this iteration of council, I've been at council long enough to know, um, that we need transparency with regards to committee, uh, meetings, not just because of the information that's being, uh, discussed, but you also need to see who is and who is not doing the work. Who is and who is not attending those council, uh, committee meetings, because I think, at least historically, uh, that would be incredibly eye-opening for you all. Uh, who is actually prepping, who is that actually delving into the work, and who is actually prepared for those meetings, who's asking good questions, and who's actually moving the dial with regards to city council. Uh, and so one of the things that, um, we believe we have in place, um, and we are, uh, scheduled to circle back with, uh, City TV, uh, tomorrow, uh, as a matter of fact, uh, to, to get an update in terms of, uh, strategy. But we believe we are at a place where we, um, should be able to, um, record those, stream those, um, upload those. Uh, and, and I'll have more information at the next meeting, but again, um, those conversations are happening in earnest. Um, we are not putting those on the back burner by, uh, pulling this resolution. My understanding, uh, the reason for the request in terms of pulling the resolution was because there was some concern, number one, that, uh, maybe some of this would be forgotten over the next month. Um, and, and that it would be something that was more, um, show than anything else, as opposed to really getting down to brass tacks and making sure that we're having the, the conversations in earnest in committee, and then circling back as a committee of the whole, uh, come September twenty-sixth and discuss what it is. Um, we're wanting to see, um, what it is we think we can, uh, bring across the goal line and then cap it with a resolution of support for transparency, at least that's my understanding. Um, I could be wrong, uh, but I wanted folks to know in the gallery that we do take, uh, your concerns seriously, uh, and we are having conversations in earnest right now, um, with regards to how we increase transparency, particularly as it pertains to those committee meetings. Thank you.
Okay, remarks by the, uh, mayor or executive assistant. Public comment on city government-related matters, uh, first we have Clarita Duckett Freeman, followed by Sean Holland.
So I had planned to, uh, speak about the ARPA funds, um, because as we all know, there was about fifty million dollars, um, that was given to the city, and it seemed like the pet projects of, of city leaders was put first rather than, um, the needs of the community. Um, and I'm thinking about how our, our president just approved some more money for the inflation, whatever, blah, 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 whatever that thing is c- called, and there's gonna be more money. And I would encourage you all to put the people who live here and pay taxes and pay rent and live in the crappy buildings that you keep approving these tax breaks for, that I would encourage you to put money into us first. You serve us, you're supposed to serve us, you're supposed to care about us. Um, and as, uh, it goes about forgetting about, um, accessibility and all of that, we ain't gonna let you forget nothing. Um, this is something that we have prioritized. Um, and, I mean, and you'll see, I mean, maybe you felt like in the past that, um, we've gotten tired and that people have dropped out. Um, and we've made a commitment to not, to get on your nerves until you do what the people want. So, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Next is Sean Holland, followed by Scott Tap House.
Good evening. Um, on Tuesday, um, August sixteenth, the Lansing People's Assembly met. We've been meeting for almost two years, a multi-generation, a multi-ethnic, uh, diverse group of Lansing residents from across, obviously, this region, where the community gathers to set the community agenda, um, and not the elected, but the collective. And on Tuesday, the ARPA funds were, um, discussed, and in that meeting, there were a lot of broken hearts and disappointment in this council. You have, uh, an august task, but you had fifty million dollars that were, that was at your disposal. According to the mandate by the federal government, that money was supposed to be used to go to communities that were deeply impacted, mostly impacted by COVID. And so, the allocation that was approved, the Lansing People's Assembly, and those in this community that gathered rejected your allocation. The one point nine million dollars is scraps to this community. What we were told was that the council and the mayor did not wanna lock in certain funding to African-American and BIPOC, uh, organizations, and that we would be made to go back through this sorry portal that, um, people are having problems with. Furthermore, we are also being told that organizations that were defunded by this council received an apology by the Ways and Means Committee. So how come certain organizations are receiving an apology? So we asked the question, did the Ways and Means Committee issue you a check? So, uh, so are we having backdoor financing and backdoor politics? Where certain organizations are being told, go through the back portal, you'll get your money? How is this transparency? How are we building trust in the community? You have fifty million dollars. I travel across this country. And you took almost seventy percent of that money and you, you use it towards fleet management, two million dollars for, uh, administrative program? Not that we don't need fire engines, and not that we don't need to invest in other areas, but we need to invest in people. And so we are demanding a reallocation of the fifty million dollars that you stole from this community and defunded this community. We have the data to show that we were here in two thousand and fifteen and asked for the same thing, and we got the same result, and we see the gun violence, and we see the result in this community, um, in twenty twenty-two. So here we are, in twenty twenty-two, asking for the same thing, and we're getting the same results. And so it is very disappointing, if you are poor in Lansing, you cannot save your way out of poverty. We have to have leadership that is bold and is willing to do something that is unpopular, that maybe the mayor doesn't wanna do. But you gotta put the people first. And we're gonna keep coming here, and we're gonna keep arguing, we're gonna keep demanding accountability until you put the people first.
Thank you.
Ain't no thank you, you didn't put us first. You didn't put us first. You had fifty million dollars.
We, we appreciate that, we do.
I know you do, I know, but, but you need to understand, we serve this community and what we're dealing with in these streets.
We, we appreciate it, thank you so much.
The next speaker is Scott Tap House, followed by Jerry Norris.
Oh, my name's Scott Tap House, I live on the north side. Maybe this is petty compared to everything else going on, but I'm fed up. I got the police that won't help, and I got neighbors living on the end of the road that think our road is a damn drag step. They're riding quads, they're driving four-wheelers, they're driving murder, dirt, dirt bikes up and down all our neighborhoods, four or five different streets, and the cops refuse to do anything. They referred me to you guys. So what are you gonna do about it? Nothing, that's what I figured.
Thank you, next we have Jerry Norris, followed by Anna Marie Horn.
Jerry Norris, twenty-five eleven Eaton, south side Eaton, east side, uh, business owner. We, we promised you when you said that you were gonna put the money back out to bid, that we would help you get more people to bid for you, we would help them apply, we would help to get the voice of the people. So you, you know, pulled back that one point nine million, and I'm gonna get to the fifty million in a second. And to keep our promise, I started creating a course on how to help people fill out the form, I don't think this is a available form online, by the way. And started reading through the Department of Treasury's forty-six-page document on how to use these funds. And as I'm reading through these, and I'm seeing, you know, revenue loss and all these definitions that they're doing, and I'm thinking about Councilman Jackson folding the piece of paper into the different pieces and the wish list and all of that. And I started looking at the budget that I found online, which, after studying it for an hour and analyzing it in different ways and wondering how we figured out how twenty-six million dollars was our revenue loss, I was told that this wasn't the proper budget. So then I was given another document, which is a list of resolutions that adds up to about seventeen million. Then I was given a newspaper article, and then I walk in here tonight and I hear that we're gonna pull the accessibility thing, and things are confusing, and they're all over the place, and they're never the same, and they're not in the same format. And I wasn't in town when the People Assembly met on Tuesday, I wish I would have been. I support this one hundred percent, the whole fifty million is suspect, and the fact that you put this opaqueness in front of us and don't let us see, don't let us participate, and don't let us express our voice, makes us be able to make up what happens behind this opaque wall. And what do you think we make up? When it's not for the people, when it's for the trucks, when it's for the police, when it's for things that we never said that we needed, that aren't helping us, that aren't improving our food security, that aren't bringing us prosperity? What do you think we're gonna make up? That we're all right in your hands? We're not all right in your hands.
Thank you. Next is Anna Marie Horn, followed by Carrington Kelsey.
Since two thousand thirteen, Hope Central Urban Arts has been instructing children and youth in performing and technical arts in an after-school program. Every Christmas and Valentine's Day, we take students to serenade seniors in senior care facilities. Particularly on Valentine's Day, we take the students to serenade the residents and hand out teddy bears. In almost ten years of offering free or discounted classes in violin, drums, musical theater, guitar, keyboard, video production, and audio production, the City of Lansing has neither awarded funds to Hope Central nor organizations like mine that have been instrumental in creating safe places and spaces for our families. It was heartbreaking to know that by cutting ARPA funding to organizations and foundations like Hope Central, my city council deemed our work undeserving of funding and the opportunity to anchor our, our organization so that we're sustainable. The work that folks like myself do that may never go viral, but the results are showing up in tests, test scores, and behavioral, and social improvement, civic engagement, and more. Please refund our community. The current transportation dilemma between Lansing School District Dean and Cata has me rethinking where my ninth grader should attend school. The families in Lansing deserve better than what was thrown at us a few weeks before school starts. In fact, instead of meeting my daughter's teachers tonight, I'm here, asking about that consideration be given to the dangerous situations that has, that has been created for our students. Where are the covered bus stops when there's inclement weather? When is additional lighting going to be placed about the city during daylight savings time, when our children are leaving and arriving in the dark? Let it be known, we do not want more police presence around our black and brown students in the name of safety. History and the disproportionate rate of people of color and unarmed deaths at the arm, at the hands of police shows, that doesn't work. Aggressive revisioning and consideration should be made, especially for families who have no choice but to go along with these plans.
Thank you.
If I, if I could stop you real quick, um, I've addressed this at, at several council meetings, I am gonna ask, and here's why. Sometimes you gotta pull the curtain back and be very explicit. With regards to snapping, as an example, um, I appreciate everything you just set up at the podium. I'm gonna be honest with you, um, the first night we had the snapping, I actually had to go back and watch the playback, because as council president, I do have to maintain decorum, and I can't focus on what is being set at the podium when folks are snapping during public comments. So I'm gonna ask you to please, please, please refrain, I promise you it, so that we can better listen to you. So we can get on, uh, get our notes right, and when there are things that we can address, that we can try to address them in earnest. So please, respect that aspect, thank you.
Can't promise that because of silencing, I'm gonna say that from one hundred from jump, and it is what it is, don't care about your feelings. All right, so, I'm simply here as an individual that's a part of the Lansing community, I've been a teacher, I've worked at the Boys and Girls Club, I've worked at every part of city service as I can, industries for my community, every day. I go talk directly to students who are impacted by gun violence every day, and when I hear the city say that these ARPA funds can't go directly to the communities who do the work, it tells me that we have no right or no reason to ever trust you. You say that you wanna give us these pretty words and these supports, but where are you when we need you? Oh, wait, you get blindsided by the mayor at the last minute and have to vote on things. Or wait, we go to Ways and Means where we look at people's voting records, and y'all continue to side with the mayor consistently to force people to be in popularity contests for funds that they desperately need. We are not here to be nice, we don't have to be respectable for you to hear our words. But clearly, you do not care about those words. You only care about voting. So guess what? This is a declaration from the community, telling you that we will check every piece of your voting record, that we will be here to hold you accountable in ways that you haven't thought of before, because guess what? You don't care about accountability when it comes down to it. I believe in action. I believe that I judge a tree by the fruit that it bears, and the fruit that you have bared is rotten and rancid with lies. And I hope you leave, I hope you lose sleep over this, please, I really hope you do. Because by forcing these communities to fight for funding from the mayor's office, who has issues when black and brown people speak up about the racism that we have been ensued, that we have been forced to deal with, that has been ensued by this specific mayor's office, when we have to deal with this consistently, we are the ones with the brunt. We are the ones who family members dies, we are the ones who students go missing. And where are you to defend us? Nowhere, yet again. So once again, I care less about your feelings, I care about black children. I care less about how you feel in that seat. You chose to do it when you got voted into office. So you have to deal with every piece of the repercussions of every action you have decided to make, which is not funding the community and forcing us to play popularity games every day. Thank you. Thank you to Jackson, thank you to Daniels, 'cause you spoke up for the one time we needed you. Shout out to y'all. The rest of y'all, sorry, sorry, that's what you are. Because when we wanna look at you, we wanna see where, exactly where you wanna vote, you voted yes, and you wanna tell us all these sad stories. But, at the end of the day, you cannot expect a community to trust you when every time you are challenged to do better, you do the worst thing possible. Not listen, turn a blind eye, and play pu, play games with people's lives.
Thank you, next is John Moran, followed by Shannon. Next is John Moran, followed by Shannon Norris. John Moran.
How was your last meeting? And I discussed how I had been assaulted on a couple of different occasions. I just wanted to fill in some of the gaps. The first assault, where I was attacked by three individuals, Officer Robert Forvis is the one that showed up to take the report, and his, there was nothing I could really tell him. I didn't know who it was that did it. There was a couple of people in my apartment that I didn't know about. I didn't know what had happened, why it happened, or anything else. That's all I could tell him. So he released me to go to the urgent care, drive myself. At that point, he went into the apartment, talked to the management there, because I worked at that apartment complex, and he found out that I had insurance. As soon as he found that out, he come running out into the parking lot, jumped in front of my truck. I damn near hit him. To tell me that, no, I can't drive myself to urgent care, he's called an ambulance. I've gotta take the ambulance, and if I tried to drive myself, he would arrest me for driving impaired. After all that, I dealt with James Gill. He showed up, accused me of being a racist, deserved, he told me I deserved being assaulted. He dropped charges on two of the people. By the time I went to court, I had thousands of dollars in medical bills unnecessary, because I had to go to the hospital, somewhere in collection agencies. When I went to court on the one individual that took a plea bargain to the assault, I received $500. When I asked the assistant prosecutor what I was supposed to do with all the medical bills, the best he could do was turn around and walked away. Walk away. He couldn't say a word to me. James Gill, he accused me of being a racist, and that's why I got beat, but I've talked to the widower of Sharon Roper, and he tells me that it had nothing to do with racism. It was actually when I was going up the steps after I talked to him, I had turned around, they were following me up the steps, and I explained to him that that was actually my apartment, and I apologized if anybody said anything or did anything out of the way. I told him that I was gonna go in there and find out what happened, because they couldn't tell me what was going on. And I guess when I turned around, I might have pointed at one of them or something, but for that, that's what I got assaulted for, was turning around and I maybe bumped somebody or something and apologized. That's what I got assaulted for. But Gill didn't want to hear that. He wanted to go with the race thing, and it cost me thousands of dollars for it. When my house got shot up, boy, this is gonna be hard, isn't it? I'm gonna be coming here a lot, because there's a lot to talk about. The city of Lansing has failed so many times. I can't wait till we get to the point where, why the city murdered my mom, or why they raided my house after they got my girlfriend all screwed up on drugs.
Next.
A predator to my house, with them outside feeding drugs.
Next, we have Shannon Norris, followed by Larry Hutchinson.
This is gonna be a long time. It's gonna take a long time. I'll be coming back for months.
I'm Shannon Norris, live in Ward 4, business in Ward 1. I didn't really prepare my speech so that I could do this very well. I'm just, I'm actually really emotional. I went to the LHC meeting earlier this evening, that they moved from Wednesday night to tonight. Was treated much the same by Doug Fleming, was laughed at when I tried to speak for people who live in the houses they manage. There are people here in this room that were witnesses to that, actually. I'm so disappointed in the idea that we have been being very vocal about, please don't sell the houses to an out-of-state investment company that's going around Michigan and buying up all the houses. Please, you know, censure the LHC. Have them rescind the RFP. They don't, there's no hurry, there's no reason to hurry, when you're talking about people's lives and the way that they're having to live. Ms. Wood, I appreciate you asking code violation guy, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, but you asked him, along with, I know Mr. Daniels, you were there, for a report of how the houses were when Fleming came in, and what it looks like now. And the one thing that I want to say to you is, please don't just look at their reports. I would urge you to actually go to the houses, because from what we understand as people who knock that doors, there are problems in the houses, and Doug Fleming is saying, oh, it's all fine, or they're dirty, or they left the shower curtain open, these kinds of things. So their checkbox, I don't trust it, and I would urge you not to either. They've proven that they can't be trusted, and so I would say, if the paper looks good, I would say you still check those houses and see if those houses are really fixed. It's really weird to me, too, the ARPA funding. I am also in favor of recalling all $50 million. I think it's gross, the resolutions, the whereases, and the $400,000 here, and the millions going to a few pastors in town. Do they sit on that money, or do they actually invest in, in the community? Does the amount of money that went to $2 million, I think, NAACP, are the, do they have that in the bank, or is it coming back out for that gun violence thing that you guys said was so important? And there are organizations that are actually doing that work, and the last thing is, the ARPA funding, you got your wish list, you got your wish list, the trucks and stuff, and so, next budget, there better not be one thing in the budget for cops. Police don't need anything. You just gave them their wish list items. How disgusting that we have pickup trucks, and people are, ugh.
Next is Larry Hutchinson, followed by Michael Lynn.
Honorable Speaker, Mr. Madar Akhman Rahim, Honorable Counsel, Mayor's Office, City Attorney's Office, City Clerk's Office, Public Safety, Local Media, Residents of the great and beautiful city of Lansing, Michigan. I'm Larry Hutchinson, Green Party nominee for Michigan Secretary of State. With all due respect to our honorable representative, Ms. Sarah, she said something that really blew my mind. She said that the governor is a resident of Lansing. I just left the grocery store. I saw a lot of things there. Doritos, lettuce, turkey meat, stuff for tacos tonight. One thing I did not bump into was our governor. I've bumped into several of our council people, I've bumped into the mayor several times, but, and I know doggone well, my governor is not gonna be here, and I'm not bumping to her. Let's just get that clear. I don't have a lot to say. Now, normally, I come up and talk about the article that got me banned from the debate. Let's talk about the other one, the NPR article, which I quoted page 43 of Malcolm X autobiography mascot, where his eighth-grade teacher went around the classroom. What would you like to be? What would you like to be? What would you like to be? Malcolm said, I'd like to be an attorney. According to the text, which they said was a racial slur, I just quoted what the man said. He said, his teacher said, Malcolm. An attorney is no realistic goal for a nigger. Excuse my language. And that's what I said at the thing. And it's just this type of thing, this type of voter suppression. They say, well, we want people to know who we're voting for. You didn't let them know who they were voting for, because you banned me from the debate. And then you went on to pile on more lies. And this is why people don't like politics, but I try. I try to bring them along, show them how fun it can be. We can have someone, it's fun, you know, going to Flint, Detroit, Ann Arbor, Kalamazoo, meeting new people. That's what I do. You know it, I know it. Free Brittany, free Larry Hoover. Thank you, counsel, and I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Lynn, followed by Linda Applin.
Finished my conversation on Article, or Number 10. And just real quickly, before I go to that, Sean Holland spoke on the ARPA funds, and I said again, I haven't spoke on those, because y'all did what y'all was gonna do. 25 million of it was already spent, and I don't even know if you had that money yet. So it was spent in advance, somewhat, or whatever the case is, but 25 million was to backfill our general fund and everything else it wasn't supposed to be for. I hope that Department of Justice come here and ream y'all ass, and his. That's what I hope happens. And I will say this before I get on with the rest of it, is that I'm gonna continue building. I'm gonna continue trying to do things the right way. I'm gonna continue building influence. I'm gonna continue doing all of this, and I'm keeping every single one of y'all in mind as I do that. The moment for like redemption and reconciliation is over, you can tell me and assure that, too. There's no more of that. We've given every opportunity. I came up here making jokes and trying to act like, you know, trying to say like, I'm ready, I'm ready to work, I'm ready to do these, let's get some stuff going, and then everybody open their doors, and I just told some of y'all, you played me on this one. I don't care what y'all talking about. You think that the man didn't tell us why he had to pull it? And you get up here and you continue telling a lie about why you wanted to? September 25th coming around, these, the resolution that came forward cannot be amended by us. If you amend it, we will be here every single day until it comes in as it was written. Period. So if there's anything to think about or talk about, just know, we will be here. And again, we will continue to build influence of people that came in here crying, whining, just like this man did. We will keep recruiting those individuals and keep coming in here, till we got thousands of people down here, blocking that metal detector up, so don't nobody get in the building. Carrington talked about action. I've been waiting to do that forever, but I thought I'd try to do things the right way before we went that way. Here we are. I know that it went there to die, just like defund the police went there to die, because y'all are, trying to be respectful, phony. I always tell people, if you lie on me, I will tell the truth on both of us. Y'all lying. Period. I spoke to four of you that said we support it as it sits, and now we come up here and we're sitting throughout this council meeting, talking about it, we're gonna, we're gonna talk further on it. You are not God. You don't get to talk further on it. The resolution is as it sits. You either agree or you don't. I would have rather seen you shoot it down. Shoot it down right here, instead of kicking it down the street to die, September 25th or whenever that becomes. With the ARPA funds, and I'm, I don't even like jumping around like this, but it needs to be said, those funds, that $2 million given out fraudulently, too. I don't care who was on there, NAACP, all the individuals on there are gatekeepers who have given the mayor favors throughout his election. They're all people I had to talk about for two years, about standing up with this dude, walking across the picket line for black folks, who've been calling accountability on him and all of y'all, and all of those people benefited from that. Every single one of them did. Period. So thank you for pulling that money. Now, the resolution is no better, because again, we gotta go up against the racist mayor to try to get the stuff that we have to get. People keep asking, is the Villas gonna apply? Why would we? You think they're gonna give us any of that money?
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Applin, followed by Michael Mercer.
I'll talk to most of y'all later tonight.
Hello, and once again, my name is Linda Applin, and I live on the South Side of Lansing. The first issue I wish to try and address is homelessness. The city should allow people to purchase property, i.e., houses on land contracts. I don't know why the city doesn't do this. It's beyond my comprehension. No banks are needed to be involved in land contracts, and you do not necessarily have to do a research in terms of the person's, whatever that thing is that they keep telling me I have, how much, how well they pay their bills. You could simply take a look at how well they pay your bills, or pay for the rent there, and you could give them a land contract. This is not rocket science, gentlemen. Two, taxes. Once again, I bring forth the issue. You are taking tax money from Lansing's Eaton County residents and giving that to the zoo in Ingham County, when Eaton County do not have the same privileges as Ingham County residents in terms of the zoo. This is unacceptable. If we pay taxes to support the zoo, we should receive the same privileges as those in Ingham County. I truly resent this, and I see no reason for this to continue. Give me back my tax money. I don't need to send it to someplace where I'm not getting the same privileges. Three, the city of Lansing should be providing legal services to people in Section 8 when they have problems with code violations. I don't know why we aren't doing that. Obviously, if they're receiving Section 8, they do not have enough money to establish escrow accounts. And half of your problems in terms of homelessness could be satisfied, or at least corrected, if the people were able to use their own money to fix the house. And that's what they could do. I, you know, the solution is simple, and why you do not take advantage of this is beyond my comprehension.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Michael Mercer. Okay, then that was it.
All right, folks, at 9:06, we're adjourned.